All right. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall and Councilmember Murray ask to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Murray and Mayor Protem Wall.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's see, next is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just a couple of things to mention tonight. First, the day of service. Last Saturday, we had a lot of participation in that, including members from all of our committees and members of council. So that was great. Had about 25 people here and took away two dump truck loads of stuff from Veterans Park and a lot of the weeds pulled around the Civic Center campus, so we appreciate that. And our partners at Timeout Burger provided lunch. So that was great, and we really appreciate that as well. Couple things, or just one other item that I wanted to mention. We had the first Terrace Talk event last night, and I thought it went terrific. We had, I believe, seven attendees here in person, along with three council members, and another 12 folks online and two council members. So that was great. We did have a little bit of a hiccup with the audio, but we will get that straightened out for the next time and make sure that we're fully capable so that our online attendees can participate. And that's really all I had for this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeff, how's the chip sealing going?
Chip sealing's going great. We got started a little bit late just because of weather. We, on Tuesday, I think we had a pretty good downpour for about an hour or so, which doesn't do well when you're starting a chip seal project. So we started a day late, but we're on track to get that target finished, or that project finished up on target. And I don't know what day it finishes, but our Public Works Director, we have a day.
They have 35 working days to complete the project, but actually, we're thinking about two more weeks with weather. I think next week, we might get a couple days they won't be able to work. They can't do it at all when there's precipitation. So once they lay two layers of chip seal, they'll come back and they'll do what's called fog sealing, once the chip ceiling's cured, which puts the final cure on it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. So next on our agenda is the review resolution for 236th Street vacation. And that's with our community and economic development associate planner, Sarah Pizzo. Did I say that correctly? Like pizza, but pizza.
All right. Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Pizzo, Associate Planner here. So I'm going to be going over a proposal we got for 236th Street vacation. Let me just start the presentation. So we received a petition from two property owners adjacent to a portion of 236th Street, Sierra MLT LLC and Whiskey Six LLC. These property owners are, represent 100% of the frontage being proposed to be vacated. And the city clerk issued a certificate of sufficiency for their petition on April 13th, So the location of the proposed vacation is just north of, or sorry, just south of 236th Street Southwest and east of Vanry Boulevard. Here's a more zoomed up map showing the location of the street vacation. This is a little bit of an outdated image on the left, but that was what was submitted with their petition. And then on the right, you can see the parcels that they own, 16, 17, and 18, which is adjacent to this segment of the right-of-way, just north, that they're looking to vacate, or have vacated. And the reason they're requesting this is because they would like to aggregate the vacated area that's proposed with their existing properties that are just adjacent, so that they have a parcel that's large enough for future mixed-use development. So the process for reviewing and processing the street vacation is to receive a petition, which we did. Today, we are seeking adoption of a resolution to set a public hearing date. At the public hearing, council will hear the merits of the street vacation, and staff will weigh in on that. And then council will have the option to adopt an ordinance to vacate the street as it's proposed, to vacate a portion of the street proposed, to table the proposal and request additional information, or to not pass the ordinance. So today, staff is recommending that city council adopt a resolution, or at the regular meeting on Monday, to set a public hearing for the date of November 2nd, 2023, for the street vacation application. And want to open it up now for discussion and questions.
Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Sarah. I think my questions are less about the street vacation and more sort of comments or things that come to mind, just looking at the underlying zoning here. I think, you know, this corner really will be important to activate as we're looking at transit-oriented development. It is literally across the street from the Light Rail Station, and I think it's good to know that developers are thinking about how to build, build in that area or on these properties. I guess I'm curious about sort of the context of this aggregated lot that, you know, which we might be aggregating to contribute to, or vacating to contribute to. You know, part of it's in the TC-1 zone, part of it is in the sort of the Terrace Station zone. I'm not sure what the best way to describe that might be. And so I'm just curious about what the implication for, for the aggregated lot might be in terms of land use assumptions there. And if I'm sort of misstating sort of underlying land use code there, please forgive me, but that's sort of the question and curiosity that first comes to mind as we're sort of considering this. But otherwise, I think for my part, the vacation makes sense there. And then I guess secondarily, and sorry if I missed it, what would the, at what point would we know the value of that property that we're vacating?
Yes, so let me, I believe it's all in the same zoning. I can double-check that. The second question, so in their proposal, they had someone from their team come up with an appraisal for that area, and that's being reviewed by a consultant that we've worked with in the past on street vacations. And so they're reviewing that, and that will be part of the public hearing discussing what that is.
Okay, and now I'm looking at the town center zoning map, and you're probably correct.
Okay.
So apologies for the confusing question at first. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Councilmember Sonmore? You need to turn on your, on the petition. It says not addressed.
I think there might not be an address associated with one of the parcels. We went with the parcel number. Sometimes there-
It says two-thirds of the real property. But I also, it'd be nice to, to understand and have the council get back on education, because we don't do these very often. We don't have to do it. We have to do it. What's the impact? We've got other properties on that street, too. We know that they're being proactively looked at, sold, and if we do this for somebody, you know, like, I was going to ask the cost of that petition. You know, we don't want to ever gift anything, but just educating the council, too, about vacations and what we can and can't do.
Sure. So the city will receive fair market compensation for the property if it's vacated. I have to look into the addressing. I know, once it is vacated, there'll have to be a boundary line adjustment or a lot consolidation, so that that piece can actually legally become a single lot with the adjacent property. So it would be assigned an address as part of that process. I don't know if that answers the first question.
Oh, I just wanted, a lot of times now, we don't have any meetings prior to, to get educated on vacating the property or doing stuff like we used to do in the past. And so now it's just come in front of us, and a lot of us haven't seen one in a long time. And so, you know, we don't have a little manual saying, okay, we can do this and that, that we probably have looked at. And so that's one of the things that we used to request from staff, is to give us a, you know, a briefing out loud of what we can do and what we can't do.
Yes, yeah.
And it's also good for anybody listening on the phone and putting into our minutes, so people don't think we're giving away property, we're not being, you know, giving more access to these owners than other owners. And so sometimes it's cut and dry, but it's always nice to review that.
Yes. Okay. Yeah, and we'll be going more into the specifics of this proposal and why staff does or does not recommend moving forward as part of the public hearing. So this will not be the first time that you're seeing this proposal. The goal of today is to set a public hearing so that you and the public can learn more about this application.
Anyone else? Okay, so on Monday is a public hearing? Hold it. I was reading.
That's for the annexation.
That's the, okay. So we adopt this resolution on September 18th and to set a public hearing date for October 16th?
Sorry. So we need to correct that.
Is that the wrong one? Am I reading the wrong thing?
That's the wrong, no, you're reading the right thing, but the date is incorrect. We had to make a last-minute change.
Oh, okay.
To change that date to November 2nd instead.
All right, so on the 18th, we're going to be adopting the resolution to set a public hearing at a future date. All right. Anyone else? So I think we can move on?
Okay.
Thank you. And next thing is the review resolution for 4713 to 40th Street Southwest Annexation.
All right.
We don't have a lot of these islands anymore. Hopefully, we'll get rid of them all.
Okay. All right, so we are coming back to council today with a request for annexation. You have seen this before, and you will see it again. So today, we're reviewing the petition for annexation, and we'll be asking for a resolution to be passed to send a notice of intent to annex to the Snohomish County Boundary Review Board. So I'm going to go through some background again, refresh you on the consistency with the comprehensive plan, update you with where we're at in the annexation process now, make the request of council clear, go over next steps, have an opportunity for Q and A, and then I have some supplemental information to reference if we need that. So this is regarding 4713 to 40th Street Southwest. That is an island area, meaning it's surrounded by the city of Mount Lake Terrace, but is Snohomish County jurisdiction, north of 240th Street Southwest, east of 48th Avenue West, and is .43 acres. And the reason the property owners would like to annex is because they have an outdated septic system and would like to receive city sewer services. So in our comprehensive plan, properties are required to annex to receive city services if they're in unincorporated areas. And our land use element from our latest comprehensive plan does identify this property for annexation. I think there was a mistake on the number of acres, because since then, this property has been surveyed, and it's been confirmed with the county that it's actually .43 acres. So just want to acknowledge that. So the annexation process, we are currently on step five, so the property owners did submit their notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings. I came before council to present this, and council considered the request and approved a circulation of a petition that was signed by the property owners and submitted August 8th. The Snohomish County Assessors Office issued a certification, certification of sufficiency on that petition. So now I'm before council to present that petition and request adoption of a resolution that will allow us to move forward with the Boundary Review Board notice of intent to annex. After, or at the same time as the Boundary Review Board is reviewing it, we also need to go to Planning Commission to have them look at the zoning of this property. And then I will be back to city council for a work session and public hearing on the ordinance to annex and to designate the zoning. And then everything gets sent to the county, the Office of Financial Management, and city departments, once the annexation passes. So today, again, we're here to ask council if they accept the petition and if they approve a resolution declaring a notice of intent to annex. And staff recommends accepting the petition and allowing us to move forward with the Boundary Kind of covered this on other slides, so I'm not going to go over that again. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Are there any questions? Councilmember Sonmore?
Can you just go over slide six? And it looks like that you've updated that in 2019, but the table down below is from 2011. And we've incorporated some areas since then, because I only thought we had a couple, is it two left, unannexed areas? So is that chart currently updated?
No, this chart's actually out of date. So there were some properties in Island A that were interested in annexing back, I think, a few years ago, but they actually withdrew from the process, so that did not move forward. I don't think there's been interest in B or D or E. And then F, we actually realized is part of Lynnwood's urban growth area, so that actually isn't an area that Mount Lake Terrace would annex. So I apologize for putting this table on.
I think the last one, maybe the one you're talking about that pulled out was on 214th. There was four houses, I think. One property owner wanted, was pushing it, and then I think at the end, I can't remember if they decided to do it or not. So that's why I was wondering, I thought this chart might be a lot smaller.
Yeah, I think what you're referencing is Island A, and there was interest, but they, the properties there did withdraw and decided not to move forward. So it's only shrunk really because Island F is not part of Mount Lake Terrace's urban growth boundary.
Were we ever looking, oh, so excuse me. Just wondering if we were ever looking into F. I don't remember that ever coming to us.
No. No, just staff in doing our own research realized that F probably shouldn't have been on this map, because it, well, or at the time, it was part of Mount Lake Terrace's urban growth boundary, but currently, it is not within the city of Mount Lake Terrace's urban growth boundary. So we wouldn't be the ones to annex any of F. That's all Lynnwood. And Lynnwood has already annexed some of that we found in our research, so.
Oh, do you remember, there was something that came to us with Lynnwood, and we said, yeah, we would take them if they didn't want to.
That was before I was on the council.
Oh, okay.
But I do remember that, because we wanted that, and Lynnwood wanted, said they wanted it, and then they didn't do anything.
Yeah, that's before my time as well.
And then there's the one on Highway 99. That's the one that's just north of the medical supply place, right?
E.
The Cordova's Medical Supply House up on 99.
Yeah, Cordova's Place. Because I do remember there was an island over there.
Yeah.
Also, we have a few to work on.
Yeah, sorry. I think that I did come to council about these at one point, and the sense I got was that we were going to wait for private property, for those owners to come to us to annex. So if that happens, of course, we will move forward, unless council feels differently about pursuing, annexing these. My last understanding is that we were going to have the property owners come to us for the private property. That's outstanding.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to pursue any of that, but.
I am working on the right-of-way still. There are some right-of-way segments that are in Snohomish County, so I'll be back as a separate agenda item on that in the future. Yes.
And has the price of connecting to the sewer gone up anymore? Is it still around $5,000 to $10,000?
I don't know.
Because that's one reason we didn't want to force anybody into annexing if they weren't having any issues with their sewer.
All right, are there any other questions? Okay, we can move on then.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
So next is the review, review the resolution to surplus vehicles with our Public Works Director, Jesse Hoffman. It's easier for me to say autos, cars, trucks.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for having me. So if an item, if we're attempting to dispose of an item with a value that we think is above $5,000, we come to you to surplus that item. We, in this case, have two vehicles, a Jeep Liberty that was built in 2005, and a Chevy Malibu built in 2009, that we would like to surplus. We estimate their surplus value to be between $4,000 and $6,000 each. The Jeep Liberty has a leaking head gasket, and the Chevy Malibu has a slipping transmission. And we think just the value of fixing those things and the age of the vehicles is going to cost us more to fix them than it would if we just surplus them out. They were also supposed to be disposed of and replaced in 2017, but since they were still going, we retained the vehicles and just kept them maintained. Let's see, I think that's really all there is to this one. If you agree with surplusing these vehicles, please, staff is recommending that you pass a resolution on Monday, September 18th, to authorize the Finance Director to dispose of this equipment. Can I answer any questions about this?
Any, Councilmember Sonmore?
This is off-topic, and it's just kind of curious and sharing knowledge, but, and I don't know if you would know, but are our police cars still all leased? Years ago, they came to us with all the Chargers, and that was a big one to get through, and I noticed not a lot of those are being used anymore. And so at the time, that was a popular car, and I think they were giving certain amounts that weren't as high, you know, to purchase them, and it was a real incentive at the time. But now, I saw you shaking your head, that we own those cars now?
That's correct. We own our whole fleet. I don't know of any leased vehicles that we have in our fleet at this point.
Because I've noticed a whole bunch of different ones, I don't know, like SUVs and trucks and different things that have changed over time.
There's been a couple of experiments by the Police Department on vehicles that they've wanted to use. They seem to have settled in on the Ford Explorer at this point, but it is, we work with them, and whatever it is, the police feel that they need to do their jobs properly, we help them do that, as long as it's in their budget.
Oh, and so my curiosity, what were we using the Jeep Liberty and the Malibu for? Was the Malibu a police car? The Jeep Liberty, I wouldn't think, would be.
The Jeep Liberty, which is a very small, when they say compact SUV, that's one of the ones you get at the rental car company, you go, oh, no. What did I do?
Oh, no. Especially if you're tall.
Yeah. We were using it for doing locates. So we do utility locates, and so it had a nice computer board where we could get the GPS system going and our GIS, and then the crew from Public Works would do locates with that vehicle. It was also being shared by one of the supervisors, but we found another vehicle for that supervisor to drive, and the Charger was being used by code enforcement.
Ah. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? So this will be on Monday night?
Yes.
This is a no-brainer.
No. I finally brought you an easy one.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan and I are concerned.
Get under there.
Yeah, we're going to do this for safety.
You're going to warn us?
Place the head gasket.
What power to you!
It's up to council.
Let's put that in our notes. We got two mechanics here.
Okay, so, thank you very much, Jesse.
Thank you.
Next is the review ordinance for the City Council Protocol Manual. And that was, that's with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Just summarizing my memo real quick. So we first talked about the city protocol manual on the retreat that council held on Saturday, May 13th, earlier this year. And one of the things that I had suggested, that I've seen work well in other instances, is an adoption of the protocol manual. Now, city council had adopted various provisions as part of that manual into code earlier. So what we've provided here is a redline version of that code to show you what will be removed from the codified piece. And then a couple of provisions that, one of the things that I had mentioned that was, I think, particularly important, especially for the efficiency of our staff operations, is to have the same meeting night each week for both regular business meetings of the council and work sessions. And what this allows us to do is any direction that council gives us to modify or- And what this allows us to do is any direction that council gives us to modify or you have specific questions about, that we're able to answer those and get the documents updated in a timeframe that will provide council to review the updates before they come, before you come back to a city council meeting and allow the public to take a look at those updates as well, just to make sure people have an opportunity to read those and comment on those if they'd like to. So...
Mayor, can I just?
Go ahead.
Can you just repeat that for a minute? I was looking at something else. You said that before this gets adopted, people are going to have time to look at it? Because isn't it on Mondays on our consent calendar?
Not this. And that's part of the problem, is because if there are any modifications this evening from council after following your discussion, we will have to do those modifications tomorrow.
Okay, that was my first question. That's why I was...
And then get those uploaded so that people can take a look.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's one of the things I think would be beneficial to the organization to avoid, so that we have time to adequately consider and make sure that we capture all your thoughts appropriately before we bring you back something to adopt that hopefully reflects what you actually intend.
And my other concern is our Mayor Protem and Aaron aren't here as well. And it's just a really important document, and so that's something to consider too, just to let them have time to walk through it again, too, because I'd like their opinions as well.
Yeah, and we don't necessarily have to put this on the consent agenda. We can absolutely do another discussion topic on this Monday night. I have talked with both Mayor Protem and Councilmember Murray, and many of you, I think, about, or most of you, about kind of the provisions and what's happening and why, just to make sure over several months. And that's why I delayed bringing this to you, if you remember correctly, just so you had time to fully digest what was in it. So just wanted to go over a couple things, and then I'll be happy to answer any questions. So really, what this is for is to centralize all of the city's policy documents and make sure that there's clarity of interaction between staff. And we know what your expectations are, and you know what to expect from us. And it's really just a guiding document. It also has a lot of the various things in there that pertain to the council manager, former government, what the conference plan, what the six-year capital facilities plan is, roles and responsibilities, just so there's clarity. It's written down. People know where to go to look to see who's responsible for what. And then there are, the biggest change, I think, will be the change in dates from, or the change in days, rather, from Monday and Thursday to all Thursdays, is what we have proposed here. And then what happens for elections of mayor and Mayor Protem? What happens when both the mayor and Mayor Protem are absent? You know, procedures like that. As I say, and I know many folks within the organization here, if we do it, if we have to do something more than three times, then we write down a procedure for it. So that's really what this is writ large. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Salmor?
I have a whole bunch. I was hoping that we could go section by section. And I guess I was hoping that this would come to a workshop first, because I haven't been briefed at all, but I did go over it tonight a little bit. I'm not unhappy with it. I know it's still codified, which is good. The only thing is it's adopted by reference, so sometimes it's not as easy and as transparent as it could be, but I'm okay with that as well because we can always put it out there for people to see. Is that okay to go section by section? Sections, I can just tell you, I just don't want to talk the whole time, is Section 2, 3, 5, 7, 8, 10, and 11. And so they're not big ones, but just need clarification on some of the things. So, Mayor, how do you want to proceed?
Well, I guess we could do that. Would that be okay? I'm looking at the redline one, and there's a lot of things taken out, but what is added? The black part is added?
Yeah, all of those things that are, well, I don't want to say all. Most of those things that are redlined in the second attachment are included in the protocol manual. So we've had our legal counsel go over that pretty extensively to make sure that we don't miss anything. But if there is something we missed, we'll be happy to get that corrected before your meeting on Monday. Let's see here. So...
So do we want to go section by, you said section by section? Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, I just welcome clarification on what we're actually talking about. So I will just say personally, I came to the meeting, and before the meeting, I saw the agenda. This presentation or manual is attached, so I'm seeing it for the first time. So there's no way you thought I'd be ready tonight to be talking about this. So I'm going to just say that. So that's maybe first clarify that, because that's a whole other, perhaps that should be in the manual. And I'm saying it that way because, no offense, I don't want to sit here and go through all this. We're missing two council members. You're missing my voice, for sure. And then we get to do it again? I would rather us all go back, digest, and then we come through and we knock this down. As much as I appreciate Councilmember Salmor's point, I'm going to go out on a limb and say if she's having reactions, we will have reactions, and we'll find ourselves doing this again. And I don't think doing it in live time is helpful today.
Okay.
But maybe I'm misunderstanding what we're doing, because it does say on Monday that we're adopting something.
Yeah, I was like, oh.
I was like, oh, we will definitely get that clarified today in the spirit of like, what? Because again, personally, I'm seeing it 30 minutes ago, right? Because we started at 7:00, and so it's 7:40. So I'm not going to lie, I saw this at 7:10, right? So in that regard, I would hope we table this and bring it back to a study session.
And I'm not opposing it, just to let you know, it's not that. And it's a template, and I did review some other cities that have it, and all of them are a little different, and that's nice to be able to tweak it what we want. Maybe I'll just throw out a suggestion. It talks about meeting rooms, and I, when we had our old city council here, it would be nice if we could have a city council office in there in case we wanted to print anything. If you notice, I'm a paper person, and I'm having a lot of problems reading. And so that was one of the things I was going to bring up, and that's a little off-topic. But, you know, that's something that I don't think the other council members would mind if I had talked about. And then it would be nice to have a paper copy of this when we're going through it, just because I notice there's just like 46 pages of it. So, but my questions weren't really big, so however you guys want to go about doing it is fine by me. One of the other questions I had that came from this is, do we want to look at our salary, salary, I can't talk, salary commission? And I was wondering, was that four years ago that we had them look at our salary? And these are questions that aren't, that kind of come from this, but are you proposing that we do it another time? I mean, they're not...
Yeah, and again, I think that's what I'm trying to clarify. So I have, as you just pointed out, a document that's 46 pages, which I think is the manual. But as I'm understanding this conversation, we're supposed to compare that to the manual that was redlined, right? Those overlap, but obviously, the redline is not making it into the final manual. So I'm looking at, I'm just looking online. I got manual, and I got manual redlined. Manual presents as a 46-page document. Manual redlines, got a lot of redlines, that I would love to know what's been redlined before I agree it should be redlined.
So it's Chapter 210 of the municipal code, and that's where a lot of things currently exist that we folded into the manual that's in front of you this evening. And this is a workshop, but I thought that I had attached this in, you know, a couple of my Friday updates, but I'll go back and take a look and make sure.
I was going to say, I read them. I don't recall.
Yeah, no, I know you do, because I get your comments, and I appreciate that. So I can go back and double-check. But I had mentioned this several times, if I remember correctly. And if some of the communication was missed, you know, I apologize. But I, it sounds like some of you got the emails with the manual attached, and some of you didn't. So I'm wondering if that's maybe some other issue.
The email?
I do remember opening this earlier than today.
Right.
But then I don't remember when, and I remember reading through, and I didn't look, it wasn't a redline copy, it was...
Yeah, and we haven't provided the redlines previously because what that is, is just taking that out of the municipal code and putting it into this manual. That's really what it was supposed to convey, and I apologize if that, the meaning didn't come across. But we can clarify that.
Okay, so did I see you have your hand up? Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. I think I recall our executive session on this, or retreat conversation on this. And I think we've also had a chance during our, I think I got a hard copy at our new council member...
Orientation.
...training. So I just, you know, I appreciate the effort here, and I think in terms of clarity and just sort of good governance. Looking forward to sort of expectation setting and clarity in this way. But I think, you know, what I'm hearing is that folks would like more time to review, and since we're missing two, you know, perhaps we can have a more, less redundant conversation.
Sure.
If we've got the whole body here.
Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Donovan Payne. So you raise a good point. Is this manual different than the one that we already went over?
No.
That's what I'm trying to figure out. I'm like, what are we even talking about at this point?
Yeah, no, it's not.
Did you go back and redline that?
No, no.
So this is the one I've already seen and read, to his point. That's what I was trying to figure out. What are we looking to do?
And I apologize.
See, I've never seen it before. This is all, yeah, all brand-new to me.
So I apologize for that. What the redline is for is what's currently adopted in Mount Lake Terrace City Code.
Okay.
Is we're proposing to take out of the city code and put it into this manual. So as I said, centralize everything, make sure everything's in one place, along with a few other added provisions.
Which, for the record, you already did that, because I've seen this, so you already have a polished manual.
We do, and we have changed the manual slightly, but only to make it Mount Lake Terrace-specific.
Okay. So now that I'm clear on what's going on, I would say, yes, let's address your questions, because I thought this was a whole new manual.
Oh.
The one that we were shown, and we were redlining stuff. I'm like, wait a minute.
Right, yeah, no, no.
I agreed to the other.
Sorry about that.
No, that's, this, again, I was trying to clarify. So, yeah, I would say proceed with yours.
So I'll try and make them quick, but there's about 15. So one is Section 207, page 12, I wrote.
This is in the manual or the redline?
Yeah, it's in the manual, not the code. It talks about, I'm just trying to find it.
Protocol manual. This is the one that's not redlined? We just go to the manual?
Right, right. The man, yeah. It's just confusing that that redline is labeled "manual" and maybe just think of it as 210, you know?
Yeah, I did look at this one.
Yeah, I know, it's just, I do the same thing. It's all good.
The advisory bodies and council participation?
Yeah, it was something about, I wrote my notes, shall not be appointed to city council advisory board concur with their term of office as something. I'm trying to figure out. And I didn't know what that meant.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to find the exact language.
Oh, here it is. I'm sorry. Councilmember's roles and relationships with city advisory bodies. Council shall not be appointed to city advisory bodies concurrent with their term of office or as councilmembers.
So basically, what that means is when you're a council member, you will not also be appointed to the Planning Commission, for instance, which does happen in various places.
You can't be what? I missed that part. If you're a council member, you can't...
Be appointed, you can't be on the council and the Planning Commission or the council and ARPEC.
It just reads funny to me. So, yeah, I had no idea. I was thinking it was like when Kyoko or somebody was on transportation, and you guys were running again for office or something, and you had a two-year term or something like that. That's what I was thinking about.
No, and this is bodies that advise the city, yeah.
Perfect. And then 301, and I'm sorry, I'm not being insensitive, I'm not. It's just sensitivity to workload to support staff members and city clerk's office is appreciated. I guess you could just put that on every one of them? I just, I just didn't know why that was put in there like that.
So none of the council members we currently have do this. But in my experience, there have been members of council that will ask the city clerk or staff in the city clerk's office to basically function as their administrative assistant. And that's why it says, please, you know, come to the city manager and ask if that assistance is available. Want to be very clear, none of, none of our current members do that, but in other cities and organizations that I've been a part of, it's a very real possibility. And this isn't just for today. This is for 20 years from now, hopefully. So just trying to put those procedures in place so that when I brief new council members for orientation, that's the expectation set. That's really what this document's all about.
Okay, I didn't know if it was based, a lot of times, things are based on things that have happened.
Right.
Right. So the one thing I didn't see in here is no surprises, you know? But maybe we don't need that now because we don't really worry about that as much as we used to. And then 3.03, meetings rooms, that's why I was just wondering if a lot of councils have access to a printer or a room that they can use? I was wondering if we could have access to a printer or something. I don't, I don't use a computer at home. I'm on a computer all day. And so that's something where you could keep your budget books and things like that. We used to have shelves that we'd all keep our budget books on, and we wouldn't have to lug them back and forth. But it's something to think about. That's off-topic, but I just wanted to bring it up.
No, I'm sure we can find a spot for that.
And then it was Item C for the salary commission. It doesn't have to do with the manual, but I was wondering, I think it was four years ago that it was last looked at, and I was wondering, when are we going to ask? Because we don't have to have a salary commission. I know it's a good idea to have one, but do we want to look at salaries again?
Salary has now been four years now? Wow.
I did look at that ordinance about two months ago, and the salary commission is reconstituted every five years, so it's actually planned for 2024, and it's already on my calendar.
Okay. But it doesn't say five years in here, so...
Where are you at?
I forgot about the five-year, I don't know. 403.
403.
Well, no, no, I take that back. 401, thank you.
401, okay. I can take a look at that and make sure that it matches up with the ordinance that council adopted four years ago.
And I'm just saying that because five years, because there's four people up this year.
Right.
And then that, those four people would all, that group of people would always kind of be, kind of left out. And that's why it's always nice to kind of stagger them. So every five years, that, let's say Steve runs, every four years, his salary would kind of keep, never get looked at as much as maybe other people in those off-years. So that's all.
Well, we can bring that ordinance back to council for consideration, too, if you'd like to.
And because when, last time we did it, we've got a whole new council since then, or quite a few, so that at least you guys could have your say in it as well.
But what I'll do then is, in your email that I send out tomorrow, I'll be sure to include a copy of that ordinance, so you can take a look at it and just share your thoughts on it.
It's, Jeff, it is referenced, or it's hyperlinked in the document.
It is.
Yeah, directs us.
2140.
Okay.
Yeah, this one right here, but it's nice to be able to look at that.
Yeah, I thought I had done that, but I wanted to make sure that it was done, so okay.
But I'm just concerned about the five-year. Just something we can discuss. And then for travel policy, so when we went to Olympia, I was so surprised that it kept on being asked for mileage and which route I took, and, because one was three miles longer than the other one. And before, when we go to Olympia, it was always just done for us. And so this now says we have 10 days to submit something. So is that just going to always be an expectation, or is there an expectation that when we go to Olympia, they know the exact mileage route to Olympia?
So what's going to happen? And this section will change, probably toward the end of next year, because we are, as you know, as I've mentioned, we're going to do a comprehensive... next year, because we are, as you know, as I've mentioned, we're going to do a comprehensive policy rewrite for all the policies of the city, personnel, everything, and we'll bring those to council for your consideration. We're gonna, what I would like to do is simplify all of those policies, so that you get a per diem check before you leave, and you don't have to submit receipts, you don't have to do any of that, except for hotels and airline travel. So, you get it beforehand, and then there's no tracking down paperwork. It simplifies and saves a lot of time for our finance department, and I think that would help out a lot.
That's what I felt bad for loan. It's like, what are you asking me? And then, she's like, well, there's a few miles, and I'm like, ah, you know, here there goes, you know, 15 minutes of her time.
Well, and that's, trying to simplify that, but we haven't changed the policy yet, so, haven't brought it back to council for their consideration yet, so that's why this is here currently, but that will change.
And then, when, how often do we elect mayor pro tem? I kept on thinking it was every year.
It is every year.
Yeah, pro tem is every year.
Yep.
It's every year?
Mm-hmm.
I swear it says in here every two years.
The mayor is every two, mayor pro tem is each, each year.
But is that?
Which section? I know...
205, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm halfway done, so...
No, that's fine. 205. Yeah, in even numbered years, the members shall choose a mayor. Permanent vacancy, and then, in...
I thought it said something about the pro tem.
Yeah.
It was every two years as well.
If council is, has determined to appoint a mayor pro tem, the mayor will conduct the election for the mayor pro tem. Okay, I can see how that's a little bit confusing, but it should be every year, and I can clarify that.
And then, 701.
Yeah. Yeah, but we, I, I can make it more clear, that's not a problem.
And then, we talked about the Thursday meeting at seven, and we're doing the, so every single Thursday, we're going to be meeting, and that is to help staff have more time to get ready for the works, or the council meeting, is that why?
I think that, and for other, another reason in my mind, is so that the public knows that there's a meeting on Thursday night, and they don't have to decide whether it's going to be a Monday night or a Thursday night, when they'd like to comment. If it's a Thursday evening, we'll be here, except the two months, I think, or...
The fifth, the fifth Thursday?
Yeah, two or three months each year, where there's five Thursdays, and then the fifth one will just be a week off, basically.
And that's usually when you take a day off, or?
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Uh, just in the spirit of, of working through this, I like the idea, so let me start there. Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, doesn't matter. I like the idea of the same day of the week. However, when we advertise it, I, how will that be advertised? Because right now, we call it a study session, and we call it a regular meeting, and so we stick with that same language?
Yes.
Oh, well, then, never mind.
Yeah, it's a work session, so the first and third Thursdays of each month will be a regular business meeting, and your second and fourth will be a work session. Yeah, so that, that will stay the same.
So you, you have, sometimes you might have a, a long time between the, the last work session and the first meeting.
Especially in those three months where there's, two or three months where there's five, it will be quite a while. It'll, substantial amount of time, but it happens three months a year, and I think that, that's manageable.
Darn, I wish it was more than that.
And cities and towns, is that still every Thursday?
That is, that is on Thursdays.
So we'll never be able to do a cities and towns?
No, so what I was going to suggest, because that's regularly scheduled, is that we adopt a, a policy that when the cities and towns dinner occurs, the council meeting or work session automatically moves to the Wednesday.
Friday?
Wednesday, not, not Friday night.
You said the, I thought you said the next day.
No, no, uh, Wednesday, it would move to the day prior.
Oh, oh, prior, okay. I didn't hear you.
Yeah, not Friday, not Friday.
I was like, what?
Saturday.
Why not?
The staff wants to go home.
What? I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, because there might be little nuances, we're not used to this, that will come up, you know, like if Aaron's son has a baseball game, soccer practice every Thursday, it's going to be, it might be difficult for, for people to get used to it for a while, so...
And we, we tried to game, uh, game plan a lot of those things out. One of the reasons when we first started talking about this was looking at those other events, and that's in addition to having our, our audiovisual expert that helps us broadcast on Monday and Thursday nights, moving planning commission, because that's on Monday nights, was definite consideration, along with a couple of other, a couple of other events. So that's how we settled on Thursdays.
Councilmember Woodard.
Sorry, because I'm the Tetris guy here. So let's play this out. So let's say we've adopted this, and so that would mean on the 19th, we would have, of October, sorry, of October, we would have had a meeting, but because there's Snohomish County Cities and Dinner, we would actually meet on the 18th, which I think the 18th is DEI, right? Which would mean you'd, well, I guess they're in that smaller room, and so you just figure out how to broadcast them and broadcast us.
Correct, and we can do that.
Okay, or give them the opportunity to join us or something. Okay. Just looking at that going, unfortunately, the cities and county shifting us messes up other responsibilities that the city has.
And, and that's primarily why we chose Thursdays, because it had the fewest conflicts.
Yeah.
And cities and towns, we used to do it monthly, well, we used to do it nine times.
If it was...
And now it's quarterly?
Yeah, and if it, it's quarterly, and if it was monthly, that would have changed the calculus for sure.
And, and, and just a clarification, planning commissioners also go to, to Thursdays too?
No, they will, they will stay on Mondays, yeah.
And then, the next one is, if we can have a little dialogue on this, 708 and order of business. And so, usually for work sessions, we do two minutes, and now I think it's being proposed to five. And the reason I'm bringing that up, because we didn't put a limit on how long. When we had a public hearing on Melody Hill, I think we had like a three-hour public comment, and so that's why we had two minutes. And I, I know we can vote to limit three, which is very, very rarely that a council will ever want to limit somebody who's talking, but it is clear, one of the big things is they were just giving their time to other people, and I know that's addressed in here. So, is everybody okay with sending the two minutes to five minutes?
And I might, I might also add that there, we can add a provision, I've seen it in other protocol manuals, and it works really well, that you have five-minute comment periods, but if 20 or more people show up and sign up for public comment, it's automatically limited to three, or two, or however a council would like to do it.
Can we put that in here?
Sure.
Oh, it's just, I'm not trying to be overly picky, but it's nice for the mayor to have that when she's running a meeting, because then she can refer back to it, and then they know that she's not pulling it out of the air, and it's, it's something that we've adopted and put together, because it's real hard being in that position to start, you know, you can't speak, can't speak, or something.
Is, is everyone comfortable with, if more than 20 people sign up on the public comment sheet?
We've, we've always done that. If we had a large group of people.
Sure.
I remember us changing the time for that night.
Yeah, and we can do it automatically through this, so if everybody's comfortable with that, I, I'd be happy to write that in.
But we're at, we're, now we're making it longer, instead of them getting two minutes or getting five minutes, and so, having that there would help.
Councilmember Woodard, and then Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for a point of clarification, looking at page 31, I think that's where we're at, E, Business Agenda, is that already covered under Council May Vote to Limit the Comment Time to Three Minutes Per Person? Because, you know, 15, 20 people versus 19, oh, I guess you don't have to, it was one, just in the spirit of locking us in.
Right.
If somebody is going to be, I'm going to sue you, which is really what the question is.
Yes.
I'd really have some, you know, wiggle room in there, and says, that seems broad enough that we say we can, you might modify and say like, for example, because there's a lot of people, like, we're not just really nilly.
Right.
Cutting it to three minutes, but...
So what, what, what that does is, when you reach that number, and we'll just say it's 20, for the sake of argument, people that have signed up, it allows the city clerk to say, we have 24 commenters, so pursuant to section, whatever, public comment is limited to three minutes each, and council does not have to vote on that.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Guess for the, the sake of, of conversation, I, I think, you know, I, I agree that sort of consistency in, in the, the manual is, is helpful, and you know what, sort of, the concept that, that sort of drives my thinking around this, especially if there were a, a popular topic that had, you know, a few dozen commenters, that we'd want sort of equity in that opportunity to speak. So, you know, at least, you know, the state legislature, you know, the chair of, of any committee can sort of set a timer, you know, they, they, they operate in more sort of constrained time blocks, but if, if there is, you know, I, I think perhaps having some, some language in here that, that sort of lays out the standards that we want to set, but also noting the, the mayor's and or council's ability to, you know, modify the, the comment period as needed, seems prudent to me, should we get a really large group, group of people wanting to, to make their, their, their point to us, so that we're not, yeah, not, not constraining folks' ability. So, I don't know if there's any precedent for that, but it seems like it might be prudent.
Make sure to give everybody an opportunity. I think what this is really all about. But I'm happy to draft it any way you like, if we have, just give the authority to the mayor to do that. I think we can do that in here, I'll double-check with our legal counsel on that, or, you know, have that set number where it's clean and it's written, or just leave it at the discretion of council. Doesn't, yeah.
Councilmember Summer.
I'm glad you brought that up. It's not, we're trying to stop anybody, but it's nice to be able to point to it. I remember a, a specific meeting where somebody was recording us, had brass knuckles and a gun, and we had an emergency stop in the meeting. I think you put that in there? I'm trying, and it was horrible, and so, it was just nice to be able to, you know, say, okay, you know, it's not being put, the blame's not being put on the mayor, it's being put on the handbook or whatever. Yeah, yeah.
And the, there are specific procedures that we have to use if there is a disruption in the meeting, and we need to stop and go, and then if the disruption continues, what we have to do. So, yeah.
And, and then, just another picky thing, E, it says business agenda, but there's nowhere on here it says business agenda, so if somebody was reading this, and we said, oh, it's the business agenda, it's like...
Fair.
It's where we're doing, there's, I, I get it, but...
Yeah.
And we just call it the, the body of the agenda or something, but, and then, my next one is 807, and 807, this is the one I, I brought up to you, and I wasn't being facetious, but it kind of goes back to what Rory was talking about, too. Meeting times in adjournment. Regular meetings and work sessions are limited to two hours unless extended by a majority vote of council. And I'm trying to picture that in my head, and so, I'm thinking, okay, I've got all staff here, and I'm at item number six, and I'm at two hours, and I have to say, Jesse, sorry, we're going to vote, and then you have to come back next time. And so, is there any way we can just say something about, I don't know, getting through the items? Because I could see, you know, somebody else saying, oh, it's two hours, I want out of here, and here's poor staff sitting here for two hours, and they don't even get a present. And so, that was my concern about, you know, having the two hours unless extended. And lately, you know, our meetings haven't gone past two hours, but I don't want to have expectations that, oh, I'm going to only be here two hours, when it's a full agenda and you guys need something voted on that night.
Yeah.
And so, I don't know if there's any disclaimers, because if you've got four people that want to go to the football game or whatever, you know, they may, you know, I'm just, I'm throwing that out there.
No.
They may say, okay, because we used to have people that used to have the, the phone and the game on, you know, and, and in a funny way, nothing bad, but I just want to make sure that there's not expectations that it has to be two hours.
And I completely understand that concern. I have never had that issue in practice. What typically happens is the two-hour time limit tends to focus the conversation on the items that are on the agenda. And when we have gone over two hours, because I've worked with the councils that have had this in their protocol manual, when they get to the two-hour mark, if there's still business that needs to be conducted, then they automatically vote to extend it. But, you know, the concern is valid, so I, I can definitely see that happening. It's just, it hasn't been in my experience, but it could definitely happen.
Can I ask if this was added on, or was it always in our policy? Because I don't think we've ever extended it before.
No, this is a newer, new piece as part of this protocol manual.
Okay, because I, I also remember in the past, if we went past 10 o'clock.
Then, yeah.
Yeah, then we had to do something. But we, we haven't done that, I think, only a couple of times.
Yeah, so that's similar, the two things are similar. And we can take this out, I mean, it's not a huge deal, it just, in my experience, tends to focus on the, the topics at hand.
Councilmember Woodard.
I, I think you found the crossroad right there. What if you change it to three hours?
Okay.
In a way, we hit the 10 o'clock mark, we do whatever you traditionally done, and I will say in my five years with us, I don't think we've gone past 10 more than once. So, it's not like it's going to get activated very much, but I do like the idea that we should acknowledge, it's 10 o'clock, people, what's going on here that we're still talking? And we sort of at seven, right? You've seen me get that grumpy, so, I think we move it to three, it'll match the culture.
Okay.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just offer a counterpoint, and say, I think if we are, I think a two-hour time block is a, it's a good goal to aim for. I, I don't, I think if, you know, I, I agree, like, there, there will be nights that we go, you know, longer than two hours and longer than, than three hours. But I think as, as a goal for, for ourselves and for our, our dear staff who make these meetings possible, I think, at least for, as a, a goal marker, two hours, I think, is good, and if we need to extend, we need to extend. So, that, that's, that's my line of thinking.
Councilmember Payne, oh, Woodard.
Would you consider two and a half hours? I'm serious, I, just saying, you know, and I, I agree, I, I think two hours is more than reasonable, but I also agree that if I'm a staff member sitting out there, I don't want to be hoping that you all are going to extend this thing, because I did just give up two hours of my personal life, even though I'm, hopefully got paid for being here. I never asked that question, because I don't want the answer. But nonetheless, your point remains, and I'm just saying, I think in practice, and so if I think further out, and it's a completely different council, what's an expectation? I think living with the culture of, at 10 o'clock, we ask what's going on, hasn't been an issue. But, you know, two hours, why not? Give it a try. Or two and a half.
And to be fair, this manual is always editable. We bring it, it's an ordinance, so we'd have to bring it about to council for consideration, but we can always change it if it doesn't match.
That was one of my questions. On 10.1, it says it's only updated for state and local policy, and local policy to me is more legislative. And I'm hoping that what we can do, because my next suggestion is like a captured a lesson learned, or such as leaving office, that can we make that a little broader and understand that, that we can update it? You know, I was looking at Bothell, and they have all these revision dates on theirs.
Sure.
And that's not, I don't want it constantly updated, that's not, but... And that's not, I don't want it constantly updated, that's not, but just to capture things, and, because one of my pet pieces for Chapter 11, and that's leaving office. And one of the things that I felt so bad when Councilman McCardo left, is that most of the time we, we give a plaque, but that's, that's open for interpretation, right? I'm not talking hundreds of dollars here, but an expectation when somebody's leaving office, that the way, because we don't have places to capture these lessons learned, right, on some of the things, is that when a council person leaves and they're at their last meeting or whenever, they're, they're given a plaque with the Mount Lake Terrace. Because I know personally, I would display that very proudly, whereas I'm going to take a piece of paper for proclamation, I'm going to, you know, file that somewhere. But it would have been, I think, really, you know, nice to have a picture with Doug and a nice plaque. And so it talks about leaving office and returning supplies. And then the other thing, as 11.02, is filling council vacancies. And it's really important to me that we don't fill a vacancy until that person actually has left their last meeting, because we were talking about it and Doug wasn't even gone yet, and people were already talking about who to fill and this. And in a way, it felt a little disrespectful, and I'm not talking about people here, it was just people that would I talk to, well, you know, get the next person on there or something. But I just felt very respectful for that person that's leaving the office. And so if we could do something like that, and this is, I thought, a good place that we could put something in there for that, is something that talks about when somebody leaves. And my other pet peeve is after somebody leaves, we never call them again and, and offer them a board or commission. And so I think that's a big learning lesson of council members, because we've had so many wonderful council members in the past, and I, and I've talked to a few, and they said, all you needed to do was ask. And we just don't ever, ever do it. And so...
Yeah, going back to the first part, 10.01, the review. So what this is intended to mean is, the city council will review and revise, city council protocol manual is needed to respond to changes in state law and local policy. So that's a, more of a, you will revise it if state law requires it, like if there's a change to the RCW that governs council manager, former government, or something like that. It doesn't limit you to only revising it at that point. It's more of a, you have to when it's necessary, but it doesn't mean that you can't change elements of it when you need to, or you'd like to.
Go ahead, Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. So can you add a second line? Like, it reads fine, what you just said, I, I read it that way. But to Councilmember Samor's point, can we add a second line that says something simple as, the city council reserves the right to revisit and update this document at any time? You know what I mean? Like, this is kind of recognizing that we have the right, for any reason, to revisit this as needed, but we will definitely do it when state law or local policy has changed.
Sure, Will. Yeah, I can add that. On the other pieces, it's been my practice, when council members leave, that they do get a plaque, usually with a picture of all of you, smiling, hopefully. And get a plaque that notes their service and the dates of their service. So I think that's just a respectful way to, to do it. So I do...
Can we retrofit that back to Doug? I'm serious, I just felt that, you know, he'd served, what, was it 16 years or 12 years? And it's just, we've had people that have left office, and Sombra, and he brought a boombox in, dressed in a tux, did, I, he didn't dance, but he played a song, we had another one, give us the bird as he was walking out. I mean, it's been all sorts of things.
That picture probably wasn't smiling.
But, you know, it's nice to set a standard, and, you know, it's personable for each person when you leave, but to, to give that person respect and honor when they leave is extremely important, because they've been serving this role. And, you know, we've done that to our mayor, we were out reading his site on last Saturday, and so I'm just thinking for anybody who leaves, it's nice to, like you said, have that respect. But sometimes it gets lost, you know, when a different regime comes in, and so, how is that new regime supposed to know if we haven't documented it?
Yeah.
Councilmember Woodard.
I just want to second, I absolutely agree with your point. I would actually go further back. When we walk in the building here on the left, it's got a number of names on there, of former council members who helped build this building. And so in the spirit of how far back do you go, I would say start there, and that would include Sean Richards. If we were to go that route, and then maybe you can frame it as, because we haven't officially even hung up any pictures, right? So maybe it's framed, or when you actually do it, framed around us officially saying this place is open, which I'm just going to keep saying, and I want to see the, the row of past mayors, or whatever it was considered.
We, we have all those plaques, it was up on the last one, and...
Where did they go?
I don't, it's probably still in boxes, but it could be all...
It's around here somewhere.
It's, it's really nice, it has a picture of like the mayor and then all the council members.
And I can, I'm sure, I know exactly the guy to ask, Ken.
And then all our budget awards.
Yeah, 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 I mean, to me, that was, those having been up in the rented space made it feel less rented.
Right.
Not having it here makes me feel like we don't accept this as our home yet, right? And so that's kind of where I'm like, I feel like we haven't put our culture up, we just have this beautiful building, but we haven't really made it Mount Lake Terrace.
And the artwork hasn't gone up yet either, so...
As long as there are the command strips and we're not putting holes in the walls.
Yeah.
You can put holes in our building.
It'd be nice to have a big case back there and you could just stick them all in there. Because I'm, I'm a big freak about not having too many holes in the wall either, so I, I can relate to that one.
But no, we can, we can add something like that here. For me personally, it's not something that I think needs to be written down, it's just something you do. But I also understand that, you know, similar to what we were talking about before, we want to build this for current and future councils, we also want to build it for current and future city managers as well. So having something like that written down, I think, is a good idea, and I can definitely add that.
So we probably should have at least outlined in, in the manual, so that it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, I can add it right here to 1101. 1101A.
Just wanted to mention, when we had those plaques up, when we wanted to look up somebody in the past, we'd just go on to the wall and look it up and go, okay, that's that mayor, and then so now we're talking about this council person. You remember that?
Yeah, especially with our birthday coming up. That's where we got a lot of the names, too, to invite to, I can't believe it was the 60th years ago, but it's going to be our 70th.
Next year.
Ours is the 70th next year, and then after that, we have to really plan for our 75th.
That's a big one.
Yeah. I know it was in works. I know it was in work, I know Virginia was putting some of that stuff together.
Oh.
And looking at stuff for that. So it might be nice, because at our 60th, it was huge, I mean, it was huge. It was at Ballenger, and the, all the rooms were full. I mean, it was, you were there?
That was at the 50th.
I'm thinking 50th.
That was at the Nile.
Yeah, we found a bunch of those, the pictures, and kind of, we were already starting to plan the 70th for next year, so we were looking at what had been done in the past. We found a bunch of those, yeah.
And so a whole different crowd, but it would be lovely. And my last but not least is the communication between city manager and council. I didn't see a whole lot, because as you can see, I'm more of a verbal communicator when trying to get information than reading. And so I think that a lot of times it's extremely important, especially during a review, or expectations, or people may, we're always talking about inclusiveness. And so we need to practice what we preach, is certain people understand certain things at different ways. And as Rick is being a teacher, you know that from your students, is that just by having something that's written, some people learn from that and some people don't. And so it's nice to be able to have those expectations defined. I don't know, and truly, I don't know if this is the right place for that, but that's something that maybe we can talk a little bit more about. That's all I had.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, so we're not going to be having this on our Monday.
I can see if I can make those changes tomorrow, make them, get them all done. If I am unable to do that, then we'll move it to whatever the next meeting is. I don't have my calendar in front of me, but we can take a look at it at that point.
Okay.
Is that comfortable? If I am able to get the changes completed, are you comfortable with Monday night? Okay.
All right. Okay, so are we done with this? All right. Oh, next is public comment. Do we have any public comments?
No one signed up. The person in the online audience would like to speak, can you please use the hand raised tool?
All right.
No public comment.
Okay, so now, has everyone reviewed the September 18th agenda? We're going to make, well, we're not making any changes yet. Councilmember Woodard.
Do we have folks who are going to read the proclamations?
We do have the two proclamations, I believe. We have Claudia, and I can't remember her last name, that is from the League of Women Voters. The, she will be here to receive at least the Constitution Week proclamation, and probably the National Voter Registration Day proclamation as well. I left a message for her today, just to remind her that the meeting was at 7:00 on Monday.
Okay, and that's actually receiving, I was talking about to deliver. Are you planning to just share them, or?
Yeah.
Whoever wants, so we're reading it, right? And, and presenting it to them, so if anybody wants to read it.
So I, I would welcome the chance to read the U.S. Constitution Week. I don't have to do the other one. I don't have to do that one either, so.
And the other one was, I have to look at...
Other one is voter registration.
Voter registration.
Okay, and who would like to do that one? Go ahead, go ahead and read that one.
So we'll just add a note, because it's written, I, Mayor, yeah.
I always work that out.
Yep. On behalf of, or whatever.
Okay, great. All right, so next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. It's that time of year, Arts of the Terrace, 43rd Annual Juried Art Show, and that will be a week from Friday. This 22nd will be the preview of the art show, and it's going to start at 6:30 in here, city council chambers here. And it'll be awards from 6:30 to 7:00. So we're going to give all the first and second, third place awards here during that. Then we're head over to the library, and then we'll have music, some libations, and from 7:00 to 9:00. And so you're all invited. And then the show will be a week long, Saturday to Saturday.
Artwork drop-off tomorrow?
Yeah, we're going to start artwork drop-off tomorrow. So they're going to start dropping off tomorrow and figure out where it goes on the mall.
Do we have to stop at night?
Yeah, I think we do.
And are you passing out that wonderful chocolate?
Yeah, there will be the chocolate, and then we'll have sandwich, mini sandwiches or rolls of cheese and meats and stuff. We're having Double D meats helping, and then there's somebody else helping.
Always first class.
Who's helping? Anyway, a couple people, vendors, and then there'll be the chocolate. Oh, and there will be, like I said, there's libations, so there'll be wine, and there also this year will be beer.
Oh. Do you have enough people volunteering for the shows?
For the show, I don't know, they, they work on seeing if we could get volunteers during the drop-off.
Okay.
And then we'll see where we are there. I mean, if you want to come and say, I'll be here on Tuesday for an hour, you could do that, too. And I think Bonnie Mercer will have the, maybe it's her, I think, someone will be there with like a calendar of who's doing what when.
Okay.
Because it'd be essentially the library hours. So Friday, Monday through Thursdays, noon to 6:00. That's after the library, our library, I think, opens at 10:00 or 10:30, doesn't it? So anyway, better look at this card, no wonder I have it. Gives you the hours. Essentially, it looks like noon to 6:00, noon to 5:00, 11:00 to 5:00 on Sunday.
Contact Bonnie.
I don't know who you should contact.
It's 2:00 to 5:00, that she'll be up here, and what time on Saturday?
Saturday's 11:00 to 5:00. So Friday, Saturday's 11:00 to 5:00. And then Sunday's 1:00 to 5:00.
There's only one Sunday.
And only one Sunday, it's the 24th. And I'll have to find out who to get in touch with if you wanted to see about volunteering. That's my job tomorrow.
All right. Anyone else? Then we're going to keep it to an hour and a half, and we're going to adjourn. Thank you. Or adjourn.